Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you.
Okay. Checking mic. Oh, there's no sound. Please hold. We run a tight ship here. Yeah.
Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you for attending a Gilbert public meeting. Here are a few things to know. The meeting will be held in the council chambers. Should additional seating be needed, you may watch from our lobby. If you would like to speak at today's meeting, you'll find both agendas and speaker cards at the front counter in the lobby. Our staff is here to assist you fill out the cards and find the corresponding agenda items. All speaker cards from the public must be submitted prior to the start of the meeting. The Town Council is committed to providing an environment where everyone's voice is heard during public meetings. In an effort to preserve order and decorum, here are a few rules and guidelines we ask everyone to follow during the meeting. You may bring signs and similar items into the council chambers, but these items may not be held above shoulder height or otherwise obstruct the view or block the path of members of the audience. Disruptions impact the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the purposes of the meeting. Therefore, disruptive behavior, including but not limited to cheering, shouting, booing, or the use of profanity, is prohibited. Applause is only permissible during the presentations and proclamations portion of the agenda. Threats directed toward any individual or group are prohibited. Speakers may not campaign or advocate for or against candidates for office or ballot issues or otherwise attempt to influence the outcomes of elections. A full list of meeting rules is displayed at the entrance of the council chambers. During the public hearing portion of the agenda and during communications from citizens, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium, then state your name, your town of residence, and begin speaking. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens who are at the meeting and wish to donate their time to a single speaker must fill out an individual card and then combine their speaker cards. In such an event, one person from the group shall be designated to present their remarks, which shall be limited to six minutes. If one speaker is speaking on behalf of others who are present, the mayor or vice mayor shall read into the record the names of those whose time is combined. No person other than the individual speaking shall enter into the discussion. Officials on the dais may not respond to any questions or comments during communications from citizens. However, the council may ask questions during public hearing items. All comments and questions shall be directed through the mayor or presiding officer. Thank you again for attending a Gilbert Town meeting and for your participation in local government.
Thank you. I'll call to order the regular council meeting of the Town of Gilbert for January 25th, 28th, 2025. Our invocation this evening will be offered by Pastor Dan Mooney of the Elliott Road Baptist Church. Pastor?
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we have the privilege of living in a free country. Please help us not to take our freedom for granted. Thank you that you are the supreme authority and that you have delegated authority to human individuals, that you are the author and the ordainer of human government. We pray this evening for Mayor Anderson and the Town Council members that you will grant them your infinite wisdom in dealing with the matters at hand. We trust you for these things. We thank you for the ability that you have to do so. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Our pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilmember Kaprowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call this time.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Present.
Councilmember Kenny Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Monte Lyons.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We have one proclamation this evening, a proclamation declaring the month of January 2025 is not in our city 2025. Councilmember Bon Giovanni will be presenting this, and I know Scott September and others in the audience may want to join him.
Whereas human trafficking is a global plague that impacts millions of people each year, including tens of thousands of Americans across all demographics and ages, including teenagers and children, and whereas the United States ranks as one of the worst countries globally, and Arizona ranks in the top 15 states with the highest rates of human trafficking per capita occurring within Maricopa County, and whereas successfully battling human trafficking requires efforts from all aspects of our community, including by schools, churches, nonprofits, law enforcement, and businesses to intervene, disrupt, and dismantle human trafficking syndicates, and must include the resources too and support survivors of human trafficking. And whereas the United States National Human Trafficking Hotline allows victims and witnesses to file reports every day of the year, 24 hours a day, with 100% confidentiality by calling 1-800-373-7888, or texting 233-733, or chatting with a live person by visiting humantraffickinghotline.org with a quick exit link included on the page for everyone visiting. And whereas in the event of an emergency, please call 911, but Gilbert Police Department also provides other contact points for reporting, including a non-emergency line of 480-503-6500, and an anonymous tip line available by texting 274-637, the keyword GPT tips, followed by a space, and your tip. And whereas Gilbert proudly joins our schools, churches, nonprofit organizations, law enforcement, federal and state coalitions, and the notinourcity.org movement in our commitment to increase public awareness of this epidemic while decreasing human trafficking that impacts our community. Now therefore, I Chuck Bon Giovanni, on behalf of Scott Anderson, Mayor of Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of January as not in our city 2025 in Gilbert, Arizona, and urge community members to report anything suspicious as well as recommend that our community works together to eliminate trafficking from our community and support all frontline efforts by organizations and law enforcement in battling against human trafficking and taking a stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate Mayor, Councilmembers, your lead every year in fighting against this evil, this darkness. And again, we're shining a light. We're believing for all 91 cities in Arizona to make a common sense proclamation and fight against this. Being ranked number 15th is not something that we're proud of as Arizonans. We're going to change that, and I tell you, hundreds of lives are being rescued and have been, and Gilbert is leading the way in the charge, influencing the rest of the state. Want to invite you all out to Night of Hope VII at Grace Community Church this year. The CEO of Team Tim Tebow Foundation is going to be speaking. We have legislation at work in our state that we're believing for this year that will help in the fight. So, thank you, and Scott, just...
Thank you, Pastor. My name is Scott September. I am the government liaison for notinourcity.org, and a few years ago, I sat up on this dais. And when I did, Chris Payne over there, the town attorney, drafted this proclamation for us. Gilbert took the lead in this fight. We are committed to bringing awareness to trafficking across the state of Arizona. I want to thank Patrick Banger for his support and our chief Solberg, who's done an excellent job aligning his detectives with the FBI Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force in Phoenix. Trafficking thrives in silence, and so I want to thank Gilbert for taking a stand and saying "not in our city." Thank you.
Councilmembers, would you like to come up for a picture, please?
Yep. Next up are the public hearings. I'll poll the council. We have items two, three, four, five, six, and seven. I do know and I have some requests or some comments from two residents that are opposed to item number four. We received them online. I don't know if they're here tonight or not. Susan Castanis and Perry Castanis. So, I'd like to poll the council to see if you have any issues with any of the other items. We'll poll number four to talk about it separately.
I'd like five, six, and seven, just to be discussed clearly.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll entertain. I'll open the public hearing on items two and three and entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept items two and three as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Please vote.
Chevelli, we're not seeing the...
It's... No.
Let me try to reset it.
Motion passes 7-0. Item four, general plan, GP 2403 zoning Z2415. I'd like a staff... I'll open the public hearing with staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristin Devine, Senior Planner. The cases I have for you tonight are going to be for a conventional rezoning and a general plan amendment for a residential area. This project is called Pony Lane. The site is located on Lindsay Road, south of Galveston, adjacent to South Valley Junior High, seen here outlined in red. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from single-family 43 to single-family 35. The request tonight consists of a general plan amendment to increase the allowed density on the site from zero to one dwelling units per acre to one to two dwelling units per acre, and to also rezone that property from SF 43 to SF 35. The parcel is currently zoned as SF 43, and the applicant is requesting to rezone it to SF 35. The main differences between the two zoning districts are highlighted here on the screen in yellow. The minimum lot area will be reduced from 43,000 square feet to 35,000 square feet. The minimum lot width would be reduced from five feet, I'm sorry, by five feet, from 145 feet down to 140 feet, and the side setback would be reduced by 10 feet from 30 feet to 20 feet. All right, and this slide here is just showing a conceptual site plan for the proposed rezoning. The site is approximately seven acres, and the applicant has been working with staff to overcome development issues on the site for about two years now. Access to the site is going to be taken from Lindsay Road. We have had previous conversations with the developer about the possibility of adding an access point from Pony Lane as a secondary point of access, but there are significant constraints with that request due to the historical canal that runs across the property. The image seen here is the most recent plan, which shows four lots. However, the rezoning is being requested as a preemptive measure to allow the three larger lots the possibility of a split in the future if their future owners choose to do so. As currently zoned, if split evenly, six oversized lots would fit onto the site at roughly 49,000 square feet, whereas allowing a downzoning to SF 35 would allow for one additional lot and put the size of those seven lots at approximately 41,000 square feet. It's important to note that any future lot split on those three larger lots will still need to abide by the setbacks for the zoning district, meaning that if a primary structure is built in the middle of one of these larger lots before they split it, it would not be able to be split because it wouldn't meet dimensions and setbacks. The surrounding area is zoned SF 43, but it does include a variety of lot sizes. I've highlighted three parcels in the area here that according to the Maricopa County assessor are under 43,000 square feet. I've labeled the lots on the image here with Lot 1 being 40,822 square feet, Lot 2 being 39,163 square feet, and Lot 3 being 40,339 square feet. Rezoning the subject parcel to SF 35 would allow for the lot sizes to be more in line with these existing lots in the area. And as a comparison, a similar case was approved in 2022 just north of this property. Access to the property is nearly identical, and a rezoning from SF 43 to SF 35 was approved at that time. A neighborhood meeting was held for this site on October 28th. There were 14 neighbors in attendance who voiced opposition to the project at that time. The reasons for their opposition were largely due to density and access. The possibility of an access point from Pony Lane was a large concern, and I would like to reiterate at this time that staff did pursue Pony Lane as an access point, but it's not a feasible option due to that canal. The applicant has also worked with the residents of the two lots on either side of the access drive to address their questions and concerns, and although staff has not heard directly from these neighbors, the applicant has explained that they are in support of the project. The project was heard at the December 4th Planning Commission Study Session. At that time, the commission had very little feedback. The project was then heard at the January 8th Planning Commission Public Hearing. There were some questions regarding access and why Pony Lane wasn't an access option, why the entry road needed to be a separate tract as opposed to incorporate it into the size of the lots, which would allow those lots to remain at SF 43. They also had questions about density and development standards and the process moving forward. They ultimately recommended, I'm sorry, they ultimately voted to recommend approval with a six to one vote. During the hearing, four comment cards were received in opposition to the project, and three of those residents did choose to speak. The residents raised concerns regarding accessing off of Lindsay Road and that they feel like the road is already dangerous enough without adding additional traffic. They are also concerned that the development may be being overdeveloped and that it will impact their quality of the neighborhood. And with that, staff does recommend approval of Z2415 and GP 2403 for Pony Lane, and I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Kristin. Are there any questions for Kristin? Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor Kristin. I remember the project in 2022. How close is it to this one? Is it on that map? The bigger map you had?
So, Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Bon Giovanni. So, this is the property that we're talking about tonight. South Valley Junior High is just above that. Galveston is just above that, and the other project is just north of that.
Okay. I'll probably see how far.
Maybe a mile.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Buckley?
I have a question. On the three larger lots, it says that they may be split at a later time. To what extent can they be split?
Sure. So, Mayor...
What is the minimum? Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry about that. So, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Buckley. So, the way that it's laid out right now, those three larger lots do have the ability to each be split one time in the future as undeveloped lots. If Lot 2 develops and they put a primary structure in the middle of that lot, they would no longer be able to meet the minimum widths and depths of a lot. So, construction of that first primary home would need to consider that about where it's placed on the lot. At a maximum, there would be seven lots on this entire site as opposed to six that would be permitted in the current zoning.
Okay, so it can only be split once. Am I correct in looking at that?
Lot, yeah.
Because the minimum has to be 35,000, I mean, yeah, 35,000 square feet.
That's correct. So, the minimum would have to be 35,000 square feet, and the minimum dimensions of the lot would need to be met as well. So, 140 feet wide by 150 feet deep.
Okay, so nothing, those three lots cannot be split smaller than in half?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. I wanted to clarify that. My other question is the ingress and egress. Is that all going to be from Lindsay Road?
It is.
And I apologize, I didn't look closely enough at the plot plan, but is there an inset where when residents come in, and this is gated, if I'm not mistaken?
Can you repeat your question?
For the entryway off of entry and exit off of Lindsay Road? So, if it's gated, is there a lead-up to the gate so that if two people are waiting to get in the gate, we're not going to have people backed up on Lindsay Road?
Sure. So, Vice Mayor Buckley, it is not a gated community.
Oh, it is not? Okay. Okay, so that shouldn't be an issue then? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I am curious, and thank you, sir. I'm curious in general, because generally, we don't like exits, ingress, egress on streets like that or Higley or anything else. I can see that it's plainly there in this plan, but why are we, have we changed something that we're now supportive of things getting onto streets that size, or has this just been in the plan that long that's grandfathered in?
So, Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Torgerson, they're accessing from Lindsay because it's already an existing access point. These two homes, 2150 and 2180, also take their access from Lindsay, and there is no other way to access this lot.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a median between there, or are we making left-hand turns coming out of this new project on Lindsay? Do you know?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. And if we do nothing, it'll be four plots? Or with the project?
It could potentially be six lots. The way that it's zoned right now, you could put six lots.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristin? Thank you, Kristin. Is the applicant present and would like to make a presentation?
The applicant does not have a presentation, but Nathan, did you have anything to add?
Good morning, or good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Nathan Finch with Cross Law Firm on behalf of the owner of the property. As Ms. Devine did an excellent job presenting, we've been working with the council for a couple of years to resolve their concerns. It's worth knowing that the singular issue that came up after the property was purchased was the town changed its rules requiring dedicating a plat of the road itself to allow ingress, egress, and a dedicated plat, which took away square footage from the planned seven lots on seven acres that was the plan when it was acquired. And I only bring that up to state the fact that a number of the concerns of the neighbors have been that this rezoning and changing in the zoning for this property would change the fundamental character of the neighborhood. But the reality is, is if you look at the neighborhood, and you probably are familiar with how these county islands, when they were county islands, were developed, was that the roads were not dedicated or platted out, and when you would build a home, you would have a road across the property, and that road counted as a part of the square footage of the lot, and therefore, you could have seven lots in exactly as this is laid out, but because you didn't have to give the square footage up to the separate plat for the road, you maintained the 43,000 square foot size of the lots. So, a seven-acre parcel could be seven homes, and that's quite specifically what is being done with this plan amendment and zoning change. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know about the median? Is there a median there? Can someone make a left-hand turn, or is it just a right-hand turn?
There is no median.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, we did get a public comment received online by Susan Castanis and Perry Castanis. Are either one of them present? Don't know what their opposition was. If not, I'll bring it back to the council. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Kaprowski.
I would move to approve GP 24-03 and zoning Z24-15.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni to approve the item as presented. Please vote. Item passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Item five, I'll open the public hearing. Property acquisition, conduct hearing, and consider adoption of Resolution Number 4531, approving the acquisition of required easements for certain parcels. Is a staff member here could make a quick presentation for Councilmember Torgerson? Maybe you can talk about five, six, and seven.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We don't particularly have a presentation put together, but we are ready for any questions that Councilmember Torgerson may have.
Really what I wanted to get to is this is all about trying to acquire water rights, our wells, et cetera, and when you see something that looks like eminent domain, whether it is or not, I wanted the general public to understand what it is we're doing. This isn't something that's just to do it. This is for water for this town. So, if there's anything you can have to share on that, I just didn't want it to go idly by and people not understand what it was.
Yeah, let me pull up some notes real quick here. Yeah, so item number five is for a temporary construction easement, and that will be for adjacent residential wall that we're raising from six feet to eight feet for more privacy. So, that's basically rebuilding that wall, and to be able to rebuild that wall, we need a temporary construction easement to build that wall. Item number six is for putting in a right turn lane at that intersection, and we need there's an easement, a drainage easement adjacent to where the right turn lane is going to go, so we have to re-modify that drainage easement. So, we need some temporary rights in there for that drainage easement. And then lastly, number seven is for a public utility easement and a temporary construction easement for cathodic protection rectifier at locations adjacent to the roadway at Queen Creek in Pinal County. So, again, just a public utility easement to be able to get our utilities in there and a temporary construction easement to be able to have the rights to construct that outside of the small areas that we have.
I appreciate the time, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Open the public hearing on items five, six, and seven, and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
I'll make a motion to accept five, six, and seven as written.
I second that.
Been moved by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor, I'll turn the meeting to you.
Oops. First order. This microphone. Okay, I've received a request, received a request from council members to seek clarification from staff on items number eight, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty. Can we please hear from staff on these items prior to moving on to the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here for Agenda item number eight, which is the contract with SMI Imaging for preventative MRI screenings for our employees. I don't have a presentation prepared, but I do have a little bit of information or can answer questions if you have a preference on which way we do this.
I've got a question for you.
I've got questions.
I'm sorry, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We've done this for a while, correct?
Correct.
What have the results been so far?
Mayor Anderson, members of council, the town did pilot this preventive MRI program with our fire department. I don't have specific numbers on how many issues that were caught early in, in stages where they could be treated at a much lesser cost. But I can say that we did catch several things through those screenings early and, and were able to get those members' treatment at a much lower cost than it would, it would be if those were to be ongoing and found in a later stage.
Catching them early, we help their, their health to begin with and we save the town money by catching it early.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically that's what I wanted to ask is knowing some of the answers because of speaking to some of the firemen that were affected, that the cost of this is more than paid back by the benefits of it. And as a self-insured entity, it's, each person saved us that. And catching cancer at stage one or two is a lot better than four. And it's, the end goal is to make the healthiest staff we have. And to save money doing it is fantastic. So I just, I wanted that explained publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here to talk about fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Item number fourteen is a contract with James Cook &amp; Hobson or JCH for the replacement of a large pump at our crossroads lift station in our sewer system. That is the largest lift station in the town. And the replacement of this pump, it's reached the end of its useful life. So it's part of our life cycle replacement program. These pumps are as large as a person, so they are expensive. It's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that one pump. And it's paid for out of the wastewater replacement fund, which is funds that we set aside for the purpose of replacing infrastructure once it's reached the end of its useful life.
Anyone have questions?
Chuck?
Sorry, Councilmember.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do you know how long the pump was told to last compared to how long it did last?
I was looking to see if we had somebody else here. I don't know. I know that, that type of equipment typically has a ten to fifteen year life expectancy, so.
Did we come close?
Yeah, these are, those types of mechanical equipment are typically a little better. I know you're alluding to the pipeline failures that we've had. But this type of equipment typically gets a little closer to its useful life because we are able to do regular preventative maintenance and inspection on it and make sure that it's functioning the way it's supposed to.
And we've been saving all along to pay for a replacement?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Jessica?
Hi.
Could you explain what a lift, what a lift station does and its purpose?
Sure. So the lift stations in our sewer system essentially sewer flows by gravity underground. And once it gets to a certain point where it gets very, very deep, it can't flow by gravity any further. So we have to use lift stations strategically placed throughout town to then pump that sewage up and pressurize it into force mains that then send it either directly to one of our wastewater treatment plants or to another port, part of our gravity sewer system where it can then continue to flow to one of the plants for treatment. Thank you.
Jessica, I'd like to clarify, these questions are an overall questions, right? Or you're not directing to, you're directing to fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, right? And they're all kind of the same? Or is this strictly for number fourteen to begin with?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Buckley, this one is just for number fourteen. So I have, I have highlights for each of the other items as well. I can go through all of them and then take questions for everything or just go one at a time? Okay. Everything and then?
I think one at a time, yeah. Well, well, all, all at one time? Okay.
Okay. Item number sixteen is a contract with ASR Construction for well site number five rehab and tank replacement. Well site number five has onsite arsenic treatment because it does have arsenic and it needs, that needs to be removed. The tank in question is part of that treatment process. It collects the backwash water when the media that, that removes the arsenic needs to be cleaned or when the well first starts up, needs to be flushed before it can be put into the distribution system. So that tank has also reached the end of its useful life and is being paid for the replacement with water replacement funds, which is again, something that we save up for in order to be able to, to complete these renovations or replacements once the infrastructure reaches the end of its useful life. Item number seventeen is a, is two different contracts. One with ASR Construction and one with Tristar Engineering. And that is for the rehabilitation of two stormwater pump stations, which is funded out of our environmental compliance fund. A condition assessment on all of our stormwater pump stations was completed in 2018. And we are moving forward with recommended repairs and rehabilitation of these two locations, which is in the Village Two subdivision and then Free Stone Park. The stormwater pump stations will take water from retention basins and typically pump them into adjacent canals through agreements we have with those different entities when we do actually get some rain and need to drain those pump stations. So they don't get used frequently, but when they do, they need to work. And these are on the list for those types of repairs. So this is also something that is funded out of our environmental compliance replacement fund and something that we've been saving up for this purpose since 2018 when we, when we formed that fund. And then item number eighteen is a job order, contract task order with Talis Construction for trip hazard and concrete repairs along the Western Powerline Trail. That's being done just, we have an annual contract that we go through and do different areas of the town for the trail maintenance to mitigate those trip hazards. And this is paid for out of the general fund, general replacement funds. And then the last one is a contract with Brown &amp; Caldwell for what's SCADA and INC., which is our control systems for the North Water Treatment Plant. So we had a contract with them to help us select the software and control system that will be part of the new North Water Treatment Plant reconstruction. And now this is the next phase of their contract in order to allow for the integration of all of our existing controls for all of our remote sites with the new North Water Treatment Plant project. And that's being paid for out of the water fund. And that's all of them in my head. Questions?
Does anyone have any question?
Yes.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Thank you. And clarify, each one of these, whether it's waste or water or EPA, that is coming out of a specific enterprise funds that are reflected on our bills, correct?
Correct. So the wastewater lift station pump is being paid for by wastewater fund. The water tank rehabilitation is being paid for by the water fund. The stormwater pump stations are paid for out of the environmental compliance and stormwater fund. And they are all kept separate and they are all accounted for individually, yes.
Right, and none of that money from those funds is bled off into any other part of the budget?
No, it's not. They're completely self-contained and self-supporting.
Okay, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. All right, we're going to move on to item number twenty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eugene Mahia, Chief AI Strategy and Transformation Officer. Regarding item number twenty, Mayor and councilmembers, it is, to give you an over, quick overview of the program, it's resulting from our emerging technology and adoption of artificial intelligence here in the town, really driving innovation towards technology and the solutions we use to drive efficiencies and productivity. And so the request for that is to procure a solution called Grammarly for the enterprise, which really is a tool that drives AI to enhance communication and professional writing as well as create and draft content to really help streamline our communication with internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders. And so what we're looking for is to procure six hundred and seventy-five licenses to deploy throughout the organization. And with that, the cost comes to about approximately seventy-three thousand dollars per year on a two-year contract agreement, at which point we have the ability to reduce that count or find ways to opt out for the second year if we choose to go that path.
Does anyone have any questions? Chuck?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I love Grammarly. I mean, I get reports every month and I'm proud to say I'm in the top three percent of the nation that uses it. With that said, six hundred and seventy-five licenses, about seven dollars and seventeen cents each over the two years. What's the plan to motivate six hundred and seventy-five people to continue to use this? Because if they did, it's a great price because I know what I'm paying for it. But I'd hate to see, you know, I know we get reports, you'll be getting reports. I'd hate to see a hundred people using this thing for two years and it would be cheaper if we just bought it individually. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, great question, Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni. So what we've done through drive adoption and adoption rate of usage is find ways to engage with employees within the organization to get feedback. That way they're committed and have shared ownership as part of that pilot program. And so with the additional two-month pilot program we ran prior to bringing this request for approval, our adoption rate has already hit a hundred percent of the hundred and fifty people as part of that pilot. And the way we do that is we look for different types of engagement, partnering with other stakeholders in the organization, like our organizational development team, to really help drive that education, awareness and understanding of how the tools can help each one of departments and what that impact mean is to the why and the purposes they serve in their day-to-day operation.
Okay, and I'm surprised Grammarly makes me look smart, so I appreciate the software.
It, it does for me as well, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaprowski?
Hi, Eugene. I just noticed this when earlier Attorney Chris Payne had showed us a little snippet from the agenda where now we're showing the contract end date. And there's a discrepancy between a two-year contract, but the contract end date as published was July of 2028. Could you just clarify what's the correct end date of the contract?
Absolutely, Mayor, Councilmember Kaprowski. So the reason be, behind the discrepancy is that we are asking to add to a contract that is a cooperative agreement that we're tied to. So this is really just part of extending that service that's offered through that agreement, but doesn't have an actual agreement to the terms that we agreed to with Grammarly for the subscription services that we're asking for.
So we're paying for our use through fiscal year, which would end in June of twenty-seven?
Correct.
But the cooperative purchase agreement language doesn't end until July of twenty-eight?
Correct. That, that cooperative agreement is just basically a vehicle for us to procure solutions so that we know it's been competitively bid.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eugene. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, Mayor and Council, are there any additional items you wish pulled from the consent agenda at this time for a presentation or a vote? Anyone? All right, well with that, I will move to approve the consent agenda, items number eight through twenty-three. Can I have?
Part? Second?
Okay, thank you. And let's vote, please. Motion carried seven zero. And I believe that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have no administrative items on the agenda tonight, so we'll move directly to communications from citizens. Again, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We value the participation of our community members and robust exchange of ideas. However, it's essential that this discourse remain respectful and constructive, reflecting the professionalism expected in such, in such forums. Misinformation and personal attacks undermine the collective efforts and do not contribute to the productive dialogue necessary for our towns of progress. This is an opportunity for the public to address the town council directly about issues impacting the town. Accordingly, the town council will not allow for moments of silence or the playing of music or other recorded material, which could distract from meeting decorum or violate copyrights. While we understand and appreciate the pa, the passion our community members bring to this session, we remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. Tonight, we'll invite you up to come up to the podium. When you come to the podium, state your name and your city of residence. And you will have three minutes to directly address the town council unless otherwise indicated. If you, if the current speaker will be speaking, will be using three minutes of another person's time, that person must stand up, state their name, city they reside in and acknowledge they are dedicating their three minutes to the current speaker. And with that, we will move on. The first speaker will be, and I'll give the first three speakers so the next speakers can be ready. So the first speaker is TJ Nihas. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. If you would come up to the podium, please. Pardon me? Oh, okay, so, okay, so you, you're not going to speak then? Okay. Did, did you, did you dedicate your time to someone else?
I didn't have anybody else for that.
Okay, well, I just, I just wanted to make sure, thank you. Okay, so the next speaker is Stephen Benar? B E N A R? B O N A R? Are you here? And I apologize, you'll have to forgive me with, if I pronounce your name wrong. And, and before you, before you start, if you, yeah, if you can push the button there, the red button. The next speaker is going to be.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, my name is Stephen Bonar. I've been a resident of the town of Gilbert and Adora Trails for over eleven years. And I wanted to share a personal experience I had with the cattle in our community. I was going for a walk one night almost a year ago and it was kind of dark. It was like seven or eight o'clock. And I heard some honking in the distance. And, you know, I didn't think much of it at first, but then I heard the sound of many hooves approaching on the sidewalk. And like, okay, I can't even see where they're coming from, but I better just get out of the way because I was concerned for my safety. So I went over to the right and about three or four seconds later, I heard of about forty cattle just plowed through right where I was walking. And I realized at that point, I mean, having lived in the community and seen the cattle on and off for years, that it was more than just a nuisance, but a public safety issue. And my biggest concern is for our children in particular because, you know, I had the presence of mind to get out of the way in that moment. But what if it had been one of my kids walking to school? The, what if it had been any of the kids in our neighborhood that had been there at that moment? And the problem seems to have gotten worse over the years, especially in the last year. And the cattle are showing up during the day too, during school hours when kids are walking to and from school. So I just would like to ask the town for its solution to potentially help this problem and see whatever the town can do for us to. and see whatever the town can do for us to help address this public safety issue for our children. And, you know, Adora Trails and residential neighborhood, just, it's not designed for livestock, right? And as my own experience showed me, when those cows get agitated, they don't have anywhere else to go except those walking paths between the rows of houses. And they're the same walking paths that our kids use to get to and from school. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Our next speaker is, I believe this is Bill Ritz, maybe?
I live in Gilbert, in Adora Trails. Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Buckley, councilmembers. First off, I want to thank the councilmembers that did show up to our town hall meeting on the 16th. It was packed house and a little bit crazy, but thank you for coming. And Councilmember Bon Joviani, I just want to thank you for your quick response to my emails. I appreciate that. You know, we need help, continued help. It's already mentioned in that last story about the public safety issue. And we know your offices are out there in the morning. I see them sometimes, six o'clock in the morning, directing people around where the cows are. So, you know, they're helping that out. But we need, we need long-term solution. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but we need a long-term solution. The public health, we pay $4,000 a month for cow cleanup out of our own pockets, and that includes the streets and sidewalk. So we need help with those. Our playgrounds, kids can't play in them unless dad goes down with a shovel and takes care of that stuff. So we need help on that. But the main reason why I'm up here today is the community has also stepped up to the plate, and we're going to pay for a fence, if you already know about, along our southern border. Now, this will seal off the southern border, but the cows have a way of getting around on the west side, over by the canal side. So we're going to need your help and probably the county's help in helping us locate those points of entry when this happens. It's going to push them down that way. Points of entry and help with sealing off that side. And I know there's some solutions to do that, probably in an inexpensive way, but to seal it off. So we'd at least have two sides sealed off completely. Now, the eastern side, there's kind of confusion over there if they can come in from the east. They do now. They get out onto Constellation, which is on the other side of the neighborhood, and come in from the east. Or they'll come up to Riggs, as the chief was saying earlier. They get up to Riggs, and they're on the side of the road at Riggs. And he was very nice when he said cars going 45 miles an hour on Riggs, he had a cow. Cows go a lot faster than that, and there's going to be a major, major incident there. So what we ask here now is your continued help and assistance, and we appreciate what you've done so far. But we need, at some point, and I don't even know what's going to happen, I know it's a multifaceted problem, and how are we going to get this totally solved? But we would enjoy your help and assistance from this point on. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Schnerbrol. And I know I didn't do a good job at that.
Schnabel rhymes with table.
Very well, thank you.
Mayor, town councilmembers, my name's Bob Schnabel. I live in Adora Trails, a community of 1,863 homes, bordered on the north by Riggs Road and on the south by the Gila River Reservation. I'm here with my friends and neighbors from Adora Trails, as well as other communities of Monte Verde, San Tenia, and the Cordera HOAs. We're here to discuss the cattle issue, which is plaguing Gilbert. It's a Gilbert issue, not an HOA issue. Two weeks ago, Adora Trails held a town hall meeting, which three members of the Gilbert Town Council attended. We realized that due to quorum restrictions, other town council members couldn't attend, but we want to thank those people who attended, especially those who drove around the community to see the cattle firsthand on numerous occasions and at all times of the day and night. Tonight, you'll hear from my neighbors about the issues that we're facing with the cattle, such as damage to the lawns, bushes, sprinkler systems, the mess they leave on the sidewalks and roads, making it impossible for handicapped residents to move around the community safely, the damage to the cars, and the danger of the cattle causing, walking and running through our community daily. We're asking Gilbert to strengthen the ordinances, making it illegal for livestock to roam freely and making it costly for the cattle owners to disobey these ordinances. Plain and simple, we need your help. None of us can fix this cattle issue by ourselves without the help of the Town of Gilbert, the county, and others. Please help us before a worst-case scenario occurs. And I know earlier in the meeting, there was discussion as far as the fence. We are putting up a fence. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that we can be a gated community because we have Patterson Elementary School in the community, and a lot of the students from Patterson live outside of Adora Trails. So even if we totally fence the community and have gates, the gates are going to have to remain open from about five o'clock in the morning until six o'clock at night, unless there are evening activities, they'd have to stay open later and on the weekends as well if there are different activities. So again, we need your help. You're going to hear a lot of people from Adora Trails speaking tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Damon Allen.
My name is Damon Allen. I live in Adora Trails, been an Arizona resident for 50 years, and I'm going to do my best because I'm not the best public speaker. I'm going to read this email that I sent to Taylor Porter the other day, and this is just a couple incidents among probably hundreds. I will omit some of the things on this because I learned a little bit in the prior meeting, so I'll try to do the best that I can. So I realize that you are, my address is 2425 East Cherry Hill Drive in Adora Trails, like I said. I realize you're aware of the serious issues in Adora Trails relating to cattle danger to residents. And then I sent this email to this gal. I did send some pictures, some concerning pictures, that if needed, you guys could take a look at that. On 1/12/25, I exited my garage to walk my dog at approximately 9:30 PM. I stepped into the driveway from my garage, a very large bull, a very large bull, okay? We're not talking 1,000 pounds. We're talking more than that, was approximately eight feet from my home entry door. I have pictures of that, and six feet away from me and my dog, leash dog. The bull saw us, charged towards us, and I was in fear for my life, honestly. I worked for ADOT for 30 years, so I've been around traffic, so I know fear for my life. I know what that means. I made some loud noises, and the bull went back into the city streets with other cows and calves, which can be concerning because calves, they want to protect them. The incident is unacceptable, very dangerous to your citizens, to your citizens. I called to file a police report. The dispatcher was very nice, but he said I couldn't file a police report because I wasn't injured, and the best thing for me to do is call when the cows are there so the officers can take care of it. The incident is unacceptable, very, oh, I brought that, I'm sorry. I apologize. Do your constituents have to be killed or injured before something is done to stop the situation? I know there have been multiple vehicle accidents. In the prior meeting, the assistant chief, I believe, said there hadn't been any accidents, but I talked to the chief, and I think it was just miscommunication. There's been seven with injuries. I'm just amazed that this situation has gone so far for these many years. I'm sure the city of Gilbert, which I love, does not need any publicity on a death or injury. It's just horrible. I'm just in fear for my grandchildren. They're precious to me. Our quality of life is affected. We can't even function. And I know you know this, but it needs to be stated that it's just, it's going too far. We need help. And I did say in the email that if this was happening in the inner city of Gilbert or all the restaurants and things, it would be, it's the same as where we live. But I understand now it's not. But our safety is the same. I had another incident that was similar to this, and I won't mention it, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Heather Ricobono.
Hello, my name is Heather Ricobono. I am a Town of Gilbert resident. I also live in the Adora Trails neighborhood. I have lived there since 2017. I have two daughters, age nine and 16 years old, so I'm on different sides of this spectrum. I am concerned for my nine-year-old, who is no longer able to play in the parks or be out riding her bike safely with her friends on our street. I also am concerned for my 16-year-old daughter, who is a new driver, who is very much at risk for a collision in the evening when we have no visibility to these cows as they run into the roadway. From my upstairs window, I have direct view of Coldwater Boulevard, I believe Boulevard, which is a very active street in our community. It runs straight through the community. I have seen and heard many, many vehicles that are coming to a screaming halt when they are trying to avoid cows. I've seen almost collisions happen many times. This would not be accounted for in any of the information that you receive because they're not called into the police. There are accidents that are misses, right? But I'm also here to tell you that a fence is the easiest solution, and we have been advised that the guardrails that would offset the idea that we could have a fence are not possible because of the legal responsibilities that would come with that. So we absolutely need your help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker is Andrea Cole.
I stand before you tonight to address an issue that has grown increasingly problematic in our community. The presence of cows roaming freely through our neighborhoods and green belts is a daily occurrence. The damage these cows are causing to our homes, such as gardens trampled on, trees, bushes and grass eaten, water lines broken. A single cow can cause hundreds to thousands of dollars of damage. For example, according to Mike Lewinsky of Moon Valley Nursery, a three-foot pygmy palm would be about $700, that's including the delivery and the planting. Well, I have six pygmy palms that were destroyed. That's $4,600. To combat the cows from further damage, some neighbors have started covering their plants at night with sheep, while on a windy evening, that is pointless. Others have hung bags with mothballs from plants, setting out ultrasonic animal repellent, and even temporary fences, which are put up at night and removed in the morning. Unfortunately, the cows at times have trampled those down. The green belts in Adora Trails are communal spaces where relaxation, exercise, recreation, and community events have turned into impromptu grazing grounds. The grass that should be there for children to play, residents to walk their dogs, or for everyone to enjoy a bit of nature is being eaten down to the roots, not to mention the cow pies. It's like walking through a minefield. This not only diminishes the aesthetic appeal to our community, but also disrupts ecological balance, leading to soil compaction and erosion. The cows also damaged a main water line and one green belt area, which caused flooding. Adora Trails was recognized as a water-wise community, maybe not anymore. Our community landscaper, Landcom, planted trees along Adora Boulevard. Due to the cows, many are no longer viable. Landcom suggested holding off on replacing them due to the cows will probably destroy them once again. Let's work together to restore our neighborhood, peaceful, beautiful place we know it can be. We have a right to enjoy our homes and communal spaces without the ongoing disruption and damage caused by these roaming cows. Thank you for your attention, and let's move forward to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron. I'll spell it for you. I don't want to slaughter another name. And I apologize.
That's okay. It's Rushko.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I've been an Adora Trails resident since the beginning. My wife and I moved in in June of 2011. Cows were somewhat of a nuisance then. The day we moved in, there was, I don't know, six, eight of them behind the models. Through all of the homeowners association meetings with Taylor Morrison, who was a developer, there were constant fence cuttings, people taking ATVs, dirt bikes running onto the reservation, endless repairing of the barbed wire. For the past year, and it's not an exaggeration, as you've heard from everybody else, we've basically had an invasion. It's not a dozen cows, it's upwards of 50, 60 cows or more at a time. They're coming all over the place. We're spending countless amount of money on things that we could better spend on other things as a development. I've watched cows follow little kids up to Patterson, and I've watched the parents follow the cows with their phones out and their cameras on the way back. We've heard of countless homeowners being injured. We had a resident hit a cow about a month or two ago, ended up going to the hospital and requiring surgery. It's, I don't like to be a bearer of gloom and doom, but it's a situation of not if, but when there's a serious injury or a fatality. The cows are all the way out to Riggs. We can tell by the cow pies that are out there. We definitely need help working together to solve this problem. People have had to alter their lifestyles, with walking and biking with all of the trails that we have. Kids, teenagers, everybody's had to change their lifestyles out of fear and concern over these cows. So we humbly request any and all help that we can get. The liability for a fatality or a serious injury is nothing to laugh about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan DeSala-Lester. Megan, are you here? All right, we'll move on to the next one, and that is Andrew Anderson.
I'm mayor and councilmembers. My name is Andrew Anderson. I've been a Gilbert resident since 2016. I moved to Gilbert, actually from Manila, Philippines with my family. I was in asset management and opened up an office here in Tempe. This was a place that we fell in love with. We haven't lived anywhere for longer than five years, and I've lived here since 2016. So we absolutely love Gilbert. What I don't love is the amount of effort that I put into my landscaping. Community member shared with you how expensive it is, you know, buying an inexpensive pygmy palm from Home Depot, watering it for eight years, and then waking up to them all being destroyed. I don't appreciate it. I have no recourse, and I have to pay for it out of my own pocket. I have video images of bulls, bulls, next to my truck. Thank God it didn't get scratched, because if it did, I'm out that money as well. I think a lot of people are sharing their concern about safety for children, which, yes, I had to stop on the main road of Adora Boulevard on my way to a job, and, because I'm in construction now, and I stopped the car on the main road as I watched a bull start aggressively going towards two girls. What am I going to do against a multi-thousand-pound bull? Nothing. But I want to at least help children. There's also concerns about those in our community that can't get out and walk, that have ADA issues, that they are now in fear of walking on our pathways. One that struck me personally was a resident in our community. She's the same age as my mother, shared her story of being charged... Shared her story of being charged by a bull. There's no way my mom would ever be able to get out of the way from a bull. And I just want to share my concern that there, there is an, there is an imminent issue here that needs to be addressed, and it's the safety of our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Kelly.
Hello, thanks for having us. We appreciate you letting us speak. I'm a member. I live in Adora Trails. I moved, retired. I was a police officer in California. Came to Gilbert because it's nice and safe and it beats California for sure. So moved in. I've never really had the issue of the cows damaging our property yet. But I can, I, I sympathize with the neighborhood. I see the damage that's being done. And being a former public safety officer, the responsibility should not fall on the residents. It belongs to city government, town government, police departments, county, state, whoever needs to get involved. Somebody needs to do something because nothing's getting done, nothing's been done, except a lot of the same pass in the buck. We're looking into this. We're looking into that. That is not the way this, this has to be fixed. I don't care if we have to put a wall in, a big fence, a fence that's not going to get cut, but doing nothing is going to get somebody killed. And I'm pretty sure the liability, because this is an open forum and this is all, the minutes are being recorded. There's negligence here, and I'm not blaming you guys. It's not any one person's fault, but something has to be done. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Bongiorno.
Hi, good evening. It's Courtney Bongiorno, not Bon Giovanni, but good evening to all and thank you for your time. I'm a resident of Gilbert and I live in Adora Trails. I've lived there for 12 years. I'm also a Realtor in the community with 27 years of experience protecting families and their property values. I'm here today to continue the discussion about the issue of increasingly large herds of cattle on our Gilbert streets, in our neighborhood of Adora Trails, and the Charlotte Patterson Elementary School grounds, as well as surrounding neighbors of Santana, Cordillera, Monteverde, and the LDS Church located at 7361 South Constellation Way in Gilbert. There are ongoing serious implications that this cattle issue is having on the health, the safety and the well-being of our residents, as well as a long-term economic impact on our property values for thousands of homeowners and registered voters. First, the health and safety concerns. I'd like to address, of course, the cow manure. We've talked about that. It's on the streets, the sidewalks, the school grounds, the church grounds, children's play areas within our neighborhoods, and it is consistently creating unsanitary conditions, posing serious health risks to our children, residents and pets, due to the potential spread of bacteria and pathogens. Secondly, there's increased maintenance costs on us as homeowners, as on the town. There's resources that are being strained within the, within the town. This growing cattle infiltration is leading to rising costs for both cleanup and sanitation. And it may eventually result in higher HOA fees, ultimately potentially county property taxes in order to raise money to fund all of these things that our Gilbert PD, they're putting time out to do all of these things for us. We're just asking that those who affected, again, thousands of homeowners in all of these communities, we ask for help. There's also the economic impact on the property values, and this isn't ever-growing. These cattle are, they're ever-growing. Can't state that enough. Their herds of cattle, their waste is literally everywhere. They're living in our green belts, on the streets, in the sidewalk. Causing property destruction, you've heard about. It's negatively affecting property values in and around the corridor, the rigs corridor. It's making homes less desirable. It's reducing the overall attractiveness of our community for residents. And potential buyers have literally walked away from transactions. They're three days from closing. They're looking at homes and they're walking away because of what they see in our community. It's not just a public nuisance. It could be a legal implication that could span, I don't know how far. We just really appreciate your time and we want to continue discussions with this concerning matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph, and I'm, the last name is just not legible. I can't, I don't know what the last name is. I believe it looks like it may start with a V. Joseph Von or V O N. I can't read it. So if Joseph, if there's a Joseph here, it's probably you. Okay, then we'll move on. And the next speaker is Juliette Damian. Damian. Oh.
Hi, I'm Juliette Damiano, and I am a resident of Gilbert in the neighborhood of Adora Trails. I have moved here about 12 years ago and also am experiencing the cow destruction in our neighborhood. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Much of what I'm going to be talking about has already been said, but there might be some other items that, you know, I want to bring to your attention. And so I'm here to address an issue that has deeply impacted our residents of Adora Trails. The constant presence of cattle wandering through our streets and sidewalks. It was once a minor inconvenience. Now, obviously, it's daily. It's affecting, you know, not only our peace and quiet, but also the safety and well-being of our residents. Every day, the cows are roaming freely through our streets, blocking sidewalks, obstructing traffic, making it nearly impossible to enjoy activities like walking, running, jogging, or even driving safely. I have two new drivers in our neighborhood, in, in my family, that are going to be driving. One is getting their permit and the other one is a new driver, so that's definitely a concern to me. Our green belts meant to be quiet spaces where families gather and children play and, and neighbors relax are often interrupted by these animals. Parents are unable, unable to let their children play outside without concern. And obviously, dog owners such as myself are really forced to avoid walking our pets in fear of an encounter with one of these large cows. So worst of all, the quiet of our evenings is shattered by the sound of cattle's passing by. We've been woken up at three in the morning by our dogs barking because they're hearing the cows outside. So we know that the HOA is working on building a fence around our neighborhood, but that solution is only addressing part of the problem. Cows are going to continue to roam from the Gila River Reservation, bypassing our neighborhood, coming onto Riggs Road, which we've already seen. We know that drivers on Riggs Road are traveling at speeds of 45 miles per hour. There is a real risk that a collision with one of these cows is going to result in a deadly accident. So we need immediate action from the town of Gilbert to restore the quiet, quiet and tranquility we deserve. We are asking for the council to update the ordinance that's going to allow the town to catch and sell cattle that would wander onto our Gilbert streets. This would obviously send a message that you have a tool that can help address the problem effectively. But beyond that, we really need a coordinated effort between the town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, and the Gila River Reservation to build a permanent fence around the ranch property where these cows are coming from and allowing us to experience the peaceful environment that we once enjoyed and now can't today. So we expect the council to take swift and decisive action tonight, not just for us, but for the entire town and surrounding areas. Thank you for your attention and we look forward to immediate action.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Madalena Dominano.
Hello, or hello. My, my name is Madalena Dominano, and I live in Adora Trails, and I'm a new driver. I just got my permit and I'm going to start driving soon. And my mom is going to be there with me, but we're really worried that when we're driving down those roads, it's always in the back of our mind that we could encounter one of those cows, and it's nearly almost impossible to see them. It's almost impossible to see them when you're turning, when they're like in those grass patches in the neighborhood. It's almost impossible until you are like a couple of feet away from them. And then you're just going too fast and then you can't stop. And that's how I think most people have almost hit the cows. It's a very big safety problem. And I'm concerned about my brother as well, my twin brother. He, he just got his license, but he, he, while he was driving in the neighborhood at night, he did almost hit a cow that was in the middle of the road. Luckily, he saw it just in time. But it's, it's a big problem, especially for those who are inexperienced with like the split second decision, decision-making while on the road. While operating a, a machine like a car, it's, it's foreign to you when you're a new driver. But it's even more foreign when you're in a dangerous situation and you, and the adrenaline is in your blood and you, you, you have to, you have to make a decision between life or death. There's a way to avoid this. That's why we have to find a solution to this cow problem that is hurting our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Virginia Driggs. She's speaking right. Yeah, you, well, you, you have three minutes, yes.
Okay. I'm Virginia Driggs, go by Jenny. I'm a 10-year resident of Adora Trails and of Gilbert and have enjoyed my time and loved my community to pieces. My deceased husband was a professional safety specialist and did airline accident investigations for the Air Force and then for Lockheed Martin as his civilian job. One of my main concerns with the cow issue is the accident that isn't possibly going to happen. It's going to happen. And the results of such an accident, human factors analysis would tell us, we know it's going to happen. These people, somebody's going to get injured. They're going to sue us. They're going to sue you. They're going to sue everybody that they can possibly sue to get the money for their accident costs plus those punitive damages. It can be several million dollars. As a longtime resident, but a retiree, my income is not continuing to grow anymore. It's starting to get smaller and smaller every year. I would rather not see my association dues have to go up and up and up, especially if we get hit with a big lawsuit and have to pay all the expenses. I'm also sure that the city of Gilbert would not want to have a lawsuit against them because you would also be part of the possible problem because you aren't aware of this problem in existence. My husband always said, there is no such thing as an accident. Somewhere, there's a chain of events and there's a human involved in that. We are all involved together and we need to work through this problem together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenny Tolman.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Tolman, and I live in Gilbert, Adora Trails. And I have quite the list of things that have happened, but I'm just going to focus on the one that was the most important to me personally. And that was, my son had a full spinal fusion. The only times that we could walk around the neighborhood was nighttime because it gets kind of hot in Arizona during the day. For his healing, because he can't bend, twist or turn, you can't outrun a cow or a bull. But we went walking at night so that he could heal. That's part of the healing process is you need to walk a lot. And so we would go walk at night. And then we come around the green belt. We were not in the green belt. We were on the sidewalk and there was a massive bull. And here I am with my son and my little daughter, and I'm like, okay, walk in front of me. If it's going to hit someone, it's going to hit me. Because it can't hit him because his back, you know, has the incision. And so they're walking in front of me. I'm like, okay, if it charges, just run inside somebody's house, right? Like he can't run, but go, it will hit me. So lots of other things have happened since in our community, like my kids not being able to play in the playground. They come covered in poop and they're not laying on the ground. They're just running, playing soccer. And my dog has gotten sick and I have multiple times almost hit the cows that just dart in front because they don't follow the, the laws of the roads, right? So they just dart in front of you and I don't walk at night anymore. So, and I would love to. I would love to enjoy my community. I would love to go out in the grass and play with my kids. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, well, I have two stapled together. Did someone donate time? Is, it looks like Scott Meyer, maybe? Would that be you or, or Ann Dussetti? Okay, and you would have a total of six minutes. But can, can you state your name, please? Okay, and the city you live in? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ann Dusset. I have been a resident of Gilbert for 26 years.
Can you state the city you live in, please?
Currently, I live in Queen Creek. I moved from Gilbert. I lived in Gilbert for 26 years. Now I live on the Gilbert-Queen Creek line. I'm not here to talk about the cows, but they have come down my road. I'm here tonight to discuss the need to pave Stacy Road for the express, to express the growing frustration within our community regarding the lack of progress. Again, we are new kids on the block, so I'm advocating on behalf of our wonderful neighbors who have been dealing with this issue for years. The issue isn't just about convenience. It's about public safety and the overall quality of life for the residents who rely on this road daily. Stacy Road is located off of Higley Road before you get to Hunt Highway. It is on the east side of the road. It is an intertwined mix, so there is Gilbert Water on Stacy Road. The homes south of Stacy Road are Queen Creek, and if you need schools, that's Chandler. I want to thank council member Bon Giovanni for driving down Stacy Road to understand your, the frustration and your communication to me within the past few days on this issue and giving me updates. It's a whole drawn-out issue but, to go into, but it would take up all my time. I would like to come up with an idea on moving up the paving of Stacy Road, on how to help our community with the dust in the meantime. When addressing health implications of leaving Stacy Road unpaved, unpaved roads generate significant amounts of dust, especially during dry weather. Last night, we had a little bit of rain and that helped with the dust. This dust doesn't just settle on our homes or vehicles. It lingers in the air that we breathe. Prolonged exposure to airborne dust can lead to respiratory issues such as asthma, bronchitis and other chronic conditions. Not sure if you're aware, but valley fever is at a 13-year high. Also, dust can contribute to certain types of leukemias. For residents living along Stacy Road, this isn't just an annoyance. It's a serious health risk that deserves immediate action. Also, unpaved roads like Stacy Road pose safety concerns. They deteriorate quickly, forming potholes and uneven surfaces that can damage vehicles and increase the likelihood of accidents. and increase the likelihood of accidents. This road is frequently used by residents, delivery vehicles, and the cattle, and even emergency responders. The current state of Stacy Road compromises not just our daily commutes, but also our community's safety. What is especially frustrating is that the builders in our area were willing to take on the paving of Stacy Road. However, upon submission of their plans, they were informed that Stacy Road is under Gilbert's jurisdiction and the process to pave the road was halted. Since then, our community has reached out to Robert Gordon here at the town to help with the dust, but that doesn't always go smoothly. We have yet to have a date provided with a clear timeline or commitment of when this project will be moved forward. I would like to also add that Mayor Scott Anderson, you have been added to this email for over a month now and there's been no acknowledgement that you are aware or any response from your assistants that you've even seen the emails. Again, this isn't personal, it's business. Our community is asking for transparency and action. When will Stacy Road be paved? The health and safety of your residents should be top priority in all of these matters. And addressing this issue would demonstrate the city's commitment to serving its people. I want to thank you for your time and I urge you to provide a clear timeline for us neighbors on Stacy Road's project. And our community in all of these issues is counting on you to make things happen. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sharon Khatza.
Good evening, Sharon Katsonas, Gilbert resident. I am here to speak on the Water Plaza reopening and the holiday lighting ceremony which took place on December 16th. After watching the construction work for nearly one year, I was thrilled to attend the grand opening of Water Tower Plaza and the Water Tower Holiday Lighting Ceremony, which is one of my favorite Gilbert traditions. The event was well-planned with activities anyone could enjoy. I spent the evening watching and hearing the excitement as children climbed into the winter-themed inflatables, ran through the splash pad, and took turns lighting down the very, very creative and fun snow, snow slopes. There were a variety of activities for our youth to enjoy as well. A favorite one appeared to be the synthetic ice rink. I saw friends and townspeople taking family pictures by the adorable red truck, so, so very cute. Of course, everyone was anticipating the exciting countdown to the Water Tower lighting and what fun it was to see our water tower light up our town again. Thank you, Gilbert, and thank you sponsors, and thank you staff for your creative and thoughtful planning. It was truly a magical experience. I also want to thank all project partners and the Gilbert Council for your part in preserving, renovating the beloved landmark and repairing our iconic Water Tower. Our future generations will enjoy it. Our beautiful Heritage District now offers a plaza that honors the site's history while providing modern amenities like a shaded, water-efficient splash pad, new and modern restore, excuse me, new and modern restroom facilities, an expansive event lawn to accommodate a variety of community gatherings and events, a shaded picnic grove, integrated seating throughout the plaza encouraging social interaction, landscaping and lighting improvements that will enhance the plaza's overall aesthetic appeal, and many others that are still to come. All of this takes time and careful planning and that's why I'm here tonight, to recognize the great job and to say, thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Critchley.
Good evening, I am Ron Critchley, I live in Gilbert. And I wanted to talk to you briefly about the water situation, how, how you charge for water. I have a three-bedroom house and a one-inch meter as required by the code. I use about 6,000 gallons a month, which is pretty much it all. And I pay about $51 and some odd cent every month for that meter. I think that the water cost is only about one-seventh of my water bill. So there's really no incentive for me to save. I can't save really, or conserve. I mean, I can conserve, but I can't save anything, there's no, no reason for me to do that. So I looked at the, the way we charge and it looks like some of the neighboring communities charge for a one-inch meter. Chandler charges about $14 a month, Tempe charges $19, Queen Creek charges $31, Phoenix charges about $8, just under $9. And so, I mean, $51, and this is before the increase is coming up in April. I mean, we're just so way out of line and I don't really understand why. So I'd like to encourage the council to maybe look into auditing our water system and why are we charging that much for the infrastructure? Our meter cost has gone up 88% in three years. With the new, with the new increase, it'll be 136%, I think, in, in four years. And so I'd like to see you guys charge more for the water and less for the meters. Our costs should be dictated, I think, by our usage. If I had a three-quarter inch meter, I'd pay quite a bit less, even though I use the same amount of water. So I'm, I'd like to, like to pay for, for what I'm using, I'd like to see some incentives for that. And if you want to conserve water in the future, I think you'll have to do that. The other communities, by the way, charge quite a bit more for water, sometimes three times as much. So I didn't know if you were aware of this or not, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rod Suave.
Well, hello and happy new year, everyone. The reason I'm here this evening is I'd like to bring a proposal to you guys of creating some community gardens at our Free, uh, Freestone Park or the Regional Park for multiple different reasons. For the community that enjoys gardening, food for people that have less and we can help them on that. As far as helping to pay for it, you guys can help with the money or the land. We could do sponsors on the garden from businesses that they can build this out with. And that's it.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay, our next speaker is Kirsten Jones.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you. I've never been at a town meeting, I'm excited. As a 53-year-old mother of four who have grown and flown, I've decided it's time for me to get in some kind of worthy cause. I have relocated here from Kansas City, Missouri, a little over five years ago, and I consider Gilbert my home and hope to never leave. I do have something I would like to ask. I'm not sure of the rules of the game here. Can I ask questions as part of my three-minute dialogue?
You can.
You can't answer them, okay. So.
And can, since we've stopped, can you state your name?
Oh, yes, my name is Kristen Jones and I, I live in Gilbert, Arizona.
Okay, thank you.
So my concern is in living in my little corner of the universe in Gilbert that I have seen expand exponentially in terms of population. Along the Williamsfield-Wrecker corridor is a lot of traffic. When I moved here, it kinda reminded me of Missouri, it was very rural and quiet and I'm okay with more people coming here, I love it, I would want to live here, I, I want to live here, that's why I'm here. But we have a traffic management problem. We have, I've noticed a huge uptick in drivers, which is fine, but drivers who are not obeying speed limits and who are very aggressive. And I'm out at all hours of the day, whether it's walking the dogs or driving. And in particular, concern is Galveston and Wrecker. And I've heard talk and chatter, whether it's on social media feeds or just talking to other members of the community, that there is supposed to be a stoplight placed at Galveston and Wrecker to slow the flow, but I don't know any more detail. And so I'm putting myself out there to, I need to obviously do some research. I'm basically saying hi because I am hoping to get more involved in the community and I'm pretty good at doing research and I will move forward with just vetting my questions to see where I can start, but thinking you'll see more of me. I'm hoping that's a good thing because I do want to help make Gilbert safe and I am concerned about the flow of traffic there. It's, it's not safe, there's, there's several schools there, there's a lot of traffic there. I don't know how much you've spent time over there. It's, it's, I am not, I, I'm a pretty defensive driver and I'm not afraid to get out on the roads and I think it's, it can be a pretty anxious experience, depending on the time of day, to try to get across vest from east to west. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Whitehoffer.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for your service to our community. I really do appreciate everything you do for us. I especially appreciated it when Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni contacted me about a recent post that I did on Go Gilbert about red light runners. I've lived in, I am, my name is Sarah Whittenhafer, I've lived in Gilbert for 26 years. And over that time, I have seen one or two cars running the red light, two, now it's three and four and five cars. And I firmly believe that every time three and four and five cars run the light, there are people at every side of the intersection thinking, I can get away with more. And what we're seeing is people die from these red light runners. I, I've seen an uptick in collisions and serious injuries and death. I think a motorcyclist was recently killed at Val Vista and Williamsfield. And I would love to ask you and plead with you, for the sake of every member in your community, intersections affect your community more than anything else and affect every person in the community. And I would like to ask you to do a study on extending a yellow light, on, on getting better timing for the lights, on implementing a four-way stop for three seconds for everyone through red lights so that everyone in the intersection has time to clear. I can imagine a better traffic flow throughout our city and all of the residents being safer just by synchronizing all of the lights so that when you're going in one direction, you're not stopping for every other light. And if you're stopping for every other light, then that gives you more of an opportunity to be hit when you, when you proceed into the intersection. Intersections are the great equalizer of our community. If it's you, or if it's me, anyone going into that intersection can be killed by a person who believes because we are not changing the way that we prosecute and do the timing, who has come to believe that red lights do not apply to them. I sincerely thank you for your time and I hope that you will conduct a study on this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janista, Janista Arnold. Janista, are you here? There you are. Pardon me?
Oh, okay. Carissa Arnold, I'm a resident of Gilbert. I just want to address, just, we're talking a lot about safety tonight, right? And we need our officers to be on top of things that are actually going on in the city, crimes and stuff. And so when our officers are having to head out to Adora Trails to move cows, very, very real safety issues, but there's options to work on that, looking at the laws where it's talking about a no-fence district. Gilbert and the county should be working with the Gila River Indian Reservation and creating a no-fence district requiring the reservation cows to be stayed, to be kept within that lines. We have kids running around with guns, we have them checking cars at night, we have them throwing objects at vehicles, we have very real trafficking issues. And hearing the fact that our officers are having to head out to go move cows because they're creating safety issues in neighborhoods becomes a problem because then that takes away from the bigger issues that are going on with teens having guns, holding guns out when they're robbing cars in front of people's homes and things like that. And we, the very real trafficking issue that you guys talked about tonight, and I appreciate you guys bringing that forward, you know my passion for that, because of our own family situation. But all of this ultimately comes down to, it's an allocation of resources. And where are we allocating our money? Where are we allocating our officers? And what is going to work best for the community? When we have cows roaming neighborhoods and, and officers, again, are going out to have to move these with their cars, what kid is getting themselves in trouble or what, what other emergency is happening that's taking our officers away from those situations? So it seems like what these residents are asking for is a very, very simple line of like, let's get fencing up or do that no-fence line. I, I'm not quite sure what the difference is between Pinow County and Maricopa County and why there isn't a border there to prevent this, our resources from being issued. But again, going back, we have 117, 171% increase in gun violence with teens going on. We cannot have our officers allocated into unnecessary things. I say this not discounting the residents because this is a very necessary thing for them, meaning that if prevention was put up to prevent these cows from coming in the neighborhood, that would prevent the unnecessary resources of officers having to go in and move these cows out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Buckley.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a point of privilege to suggest a five-minute bio break?
Certainly. So we'll now have a five-minute break. We'll be back in five minutes.
Our communications, we have several more to go through. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. To continue communications from citizens, the next speaker is Sarah Clarkson. Sarah, are you here? Okay, we will move along to, I believe Susan Boren is donating her time to Basa Rudy.
Other way around.
Oh, the other, oh, okay. Says I wish to donate my time to Susan from, but that's okay. Are you Susan?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you will have six minutes, and if Basa Rudy could stand up and--
I can't, but I'm Basa Rudy.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. And the city you live in.
I live in Gilbert.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Okay. Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Buckley, council members and town staff. Susan Boria, I'm a resident of Gilbert, Adora Trails, and I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of my friend and neighbor Basa Rudy. You introduced yourself. My name is Basa, and I am disabled. I survived a massive stroke at the age of 34 over seven years ago. My family and I chose to leave Illinois and move to beautiful Arizona as I worked on my recovery and reestablishing my life. I am a wife and a mother to a 14-year-old son. My stroke took much from me, but it has also given me an appreciation for the simple, everyday things in life. I am unable to walk or get around without the use of a walker or my mobility scooter. I also can't ride a standard bike anymore, but I have been blessed to be able to buy a specialized electric trike. This trike allows me the ability to spend time with my family, doing something we always loved, exploring on nice, long bike rides. This bike also allows me the ability to continue to work on my strength in healing my body. Unfortunately, the uncontrolled herds of cattle have turned something wonderful into a potentially dangerous situation for me. I can't get out of the way quickly. I can't jump a curb. I can't stand up and run away. At its most basic, it's even incredibly difficult or impossible for me to avoid a cow pie. While I can walk slowly using a walker, outside our home, I use a mobility scooter. This scooter has enabled me to become independent. I have always had a deep sense of civic responsibility and deeply care about my community. I work part-time at the community center in Adora Trails, a job I love. My scooter is what gets me there. Again, if a herd is coming, it is very difficult for me to get out of the way. In the dark, it's almost impossible to avoid cattle or cow pies. I have been scared and stressed every time I have left my home in the last few months. I believe this is unfair, and we need to remedy this situation. These herds cannot be allowed to roam unchecked. When President Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act in 1990, he was thinking of Americans like me. Despite being disabled, we choose to go above and beyond to contribute to our community, to participate in life, and to be an asset instead of a burden. All I ask is that I am allowed to continue to live my life as best and safe as I can. I would like to implore the council members to consider working with the community and the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors to change the ordinances in Gilbert. I just would like to add on my own, as a former safety person, I'm embarrassed to say that I never really thought about the issues facing people who are handicapped with the cattle and the cow pies in our community. But after talking to Basa, there are several handicapped people in our community, never mind the families who try and walk with their children in the baby carriages that can't do it now. So I as well add my voice to my friends and neighbors who are imploring you to really work together collectively, all the parties that should be sitting at the table, to sit at the table together and come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next speaker is, we have Rayanne Wood, and I believe she is donating her time to Robert Bak--
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Robert.
Thank you.
From Gilbert.
Thank you very much. Rayanne, you'll have six minutes.
Good evening, members of the town council and the mayor. I stand before you today to express my concern regarding the town's attempt to remove the landscaping in the public right-of-way within College Park Country Estates. What is being proposed here is not only misguided, but it is also wrong. The decision to remove these trees is based on the assumption that they pose a danger, yet the arborist report commissioned by the town itself clearly deems the trees low risk. This report was prepared by a professional tree risk assessment qualified arborist who accounted for all potential hazards, including sudden branch drop. I want to point out that the report highlights that all eucalyptus trees are prone to sudden branch drop, all eucalyptus trees. So I ask, is it the town's stance to remove all eucalyptus trees from publicly owned property? If so, does this include the five newly planted eucalyptus trees in Water Tower Park? Trees that were approved by all of you less than a month ago? And does this apply to the 16 eucalyptus trees recently planted in the median on Val Vista Road between baseline and Guadalupe? And does this include the 95 eucalyptus trees across all the public parks that Gilbert maintains? Here's your water tower with the eucalyptus trees. Here's your plaque that you guys all got recognized for. And here's more eucalyptus trees along Val Vista Road. It is worth noting that Public Works Director Jessica Marlowe recently stated that eucalyptus trees are no longer planted in the town. Yet, as I've just pointed out, there are new eucalyptus trees planted in both Water Tower Park, along Val Vista, and in your parks. How does this discrepancy align with the town's supposed policy? Furthermore, I want to remind the council that the landscaping in our subdivision, College Park Country Estates, according to the town staff, is valued at over $200,000. The idea of placing these publicly owned assets into the hands of just six residents without considering the broader community's concern is reckless and unacceptable. Jessica Marlowe also stated that our subdivision is the only one where the Streets Department is responsible for landscape maintenance. However, this is simply not true. The town maintains in public right-of-ways in multiple subdivisions in the Heritage District, in multiple subdivisions. And it was the town itself that planted most of these trees, as she stated. Well, let me remind you, the town planted nearly all the trees in our neighborhood, in the right-of-way as well. This raises an important question. Why is our neighborhood being treated differently? In a 1998 town council meeting, it was noted that the town spends nearly $166,000-- In a 1998 town council meeting, it was noted that the town spends nearly $166,000 annually to maintain older subdivisions that lack a PKID or an HOA. Given this historical commitment to maintaining landscaping in similar areas, I respectfully request clarification on why these trees has been, why there's been a change in maintenance practices in our subdivision. If our neighborhood is now the sole remaining subdivision that the town maintains, what has happened to all the landscaping in the other, older subdivisions? Has the town removed landscaping from those areas based on unfounded claims of risk? Or is there another underlying reason for this shift? Addressing Councilmember Koproski's concerns, it is critical to emphasize that the arborist report does not identify the trees in question as hazardous. Instead, it classifies them at low risk and recommends pruning to mitigate any further concerns. The Streets Department's failure to follow the recommendations is what has led to the current risk and concerns of liability. It is important to note that creating a PKID, as mentioned by staff, is not optional in some neighborhoods. It is a requirement on the plat. Our plat does not have such a requirement. In conclusion, I respectfully urge the town to reconsider its position on applying the 1982 right-of-way landscape maintenance ordinance to a pre-1982 plat. The acceptance of our plat in 1972, combined with Arizona law, suggests that these requirements should not apply to our property. Furthermore, Section 5.4.2 of the ordinance supports these requirements are meant for new developments, not existing properties like ours. Lastly, I must express my concern regarding the presentation given to the town council during the executive session. It is clear that critical information was omitted, information that would have provided a fuller picture to the council and helped in making a decision that is the best interest of the town and its citizens, not just the Streets Department's bottom line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be, we have Allison, well, we have, I believe it's Brendan Wood, and Allison Holgraf? And, okay, and you're donating your time, right? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Scott Anderson, and members of the town council. I appreciate your time and commitment to our community. My name is Brendan Wood. I'm a Gilbert resident. I'm a member of College Park Country Estates, and I'm here to oppose the Town of Gilbert Streets Department's plan to remove landscaping from the town-owned right-of-way in our neighborhood and shift maintenance responsibility onto adjacent homeowners. The town claims our subdivision is in violation of the Land Development Code, but that claim does not hold up under scrutiny. First and foremost, Section 5.7 of the Land Development Code explicitly addresses legal, non-conforming properties, commonly referred to as being grandfathered in. Despite what Town Attorney Chris Payne has stated, this principle should apply here as well. The town should not be enforcing new regulations on something that was legally established and accepted under previous rules. To understand this issue fully, we need to look at Ordinance Number 315, which was incorporated into the Land Development Code in 1982. At the last town council meeting, staff agreed this ordinance was adopted in 1982, but they failed to read the section that clarifies who it applies to, so I'll do that now. The original ordinance states, "Section B, applicability. This part shall apply to the following buildings and uses in all districts except single-family residential uses. A) All new buildings and new uses of land. Section B: Substantial additions to or remodelings of existing buildings where there is a change in the distinguishing characteristics or primary features of the building or land." Nowhere does it say the ordinance applies retroactively. Nowhere does it include single-family residential properties. In fact, Arizona law, ARS 1-244, clearly states that no law is retroactive unless it is explicitly stated. That is not the case here. Our subdivision plat, recorded in 1972, further conforms that homeowners were never obligated to maintain right-of-way landscaping. When the Town of Gilbert approved our neighborhood, it accepted all dedications, including improvements like landscaping. There is no mention of a homeowner's maintenance requirement, nor any reference to a PKID. Compare this to other plats in Gilbert that do explicitly require a PKID for maintenance. The distinction is clear. Our plat was never included such a requirement because it was never part of the agreement when the town approved it. Moreover, the town has maintained right-of-way landscaping in other neighborhoods, establishing a precedent. If the town has been maintaining similar landscaping elsewhere, why is it now trying to shift the burden onto us? Beyond the legal issues, this decision is simply unfair. Homeowners purchased their properties with the expectation that the town would maintain these areas. Now, with little notice, the town is attempting to offload this responsibility onto us, contradicting its own policies on neighborhood maintenance and reinvestment goals. Policy 16 of Gilbert's general plan states it should recognize, sustain, and promote the quality and character of existing residential neighborhoods as they mature. Policy 17 states ensure the conservation and maintenance of existing housing and encourage reinvestment. The town should uphold these commitments by maintaining public infrastructure, including landscaping, rather than pushing that responsibility onto homeowners. Furthermore, the town's recorded easement agreement grants the town the right to construct, operate, and maintain a public roadway. This includes landscaping within the right-of-way. According to the town's own public works and engineering standards, a street includes its right-of-way, which is designated for utilities and landscaping. By these definitions, right-of-way landscaping is part of the public street system. Yet, the town is now attempting to disregard its own policies and standards. Town staff already knows all of this information, but they're not sharing the full picture with you. If this code were truly enforceable, the town would simply enforce it. Instead, they are asking homeowners to voluntarily sign a covenant for ongoing landscape maintenance. That tells you everything you need to know. If the town had the legal authority to mandate this change, it wouldn't be seeking voluntary compliance. The fact that they are relying on homeowners to accept this responsibility willingly suggests they lack a strong legal basis to impose it. Given all this, I respectfully ask the council to, number one, reevaluate the Streets Department's actions and prevent the undressed removal of landscaping in our neighborhood. Number two, conduct a formal review of the legal and historical basis for this policy shift. And number three, establish a clear, fair, and consistent policy to ensure that other neighborhoods do not face similar issues in the future. It seems to me that the cows are posing more danger than the trees in our neighborhood. No one has came up here to the podium and said that they feel scared of the trees. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, so our next speakers, we have, I believe, will be Vincent Ruvalo, and it appears that Debbie Ruvalo is donating her time. Vincent, are you here? Okay. You'll have, you'll have six minutes. And Debbie, could you state your name and the city you live in? Thank you.
Hello? All right, it works. Well, despite everything you've heard, I like cows. My name is Vincent Ruvalo, Gilbert resident for the past three years. I like animals, I like cows. Tenderloin, ribeye, strip, doesn't matter, it's all the same to me. The reality is, the cows are a bit of a nuisance, a threat to property and public safety. I can't go outside, walk the dog at night without the concern of a raging bull skewering me like Vlad the Impaler. If livestock rushes the road and destroys my vehicle and causes bodily injury, Arizona Revise Statute 3-1311 and 3-1421 says I am responsible for the damages to my vehicle and not the livestock owner. I'm also required by 28-667 to report the accident to law enforcement, and failure to report may incur criminal penalties tantamount to a hit-and-run. Last month, I was five feet away from great bodily injury or death, once bypassing directly through a gap between two cows while on my motorcycle, and another face-to-face with five livestock animals on my property. It's important to mention, Arizona Revise Statute 13-3112, Arizona is a constitutional carry state with or without a permit. 13-405, 13-411, stand your ground law, meaning there is no duty to retreat before using deadly force in a place where you have a legal right to be. Use of deadly force is justified if you reasonably believe it is necessary to prevent imminent death or great bodily harm. 13-407, 13-408, 13-409, castle doctrine is the use of deadly force to defend their home or vehicle without the duty to retreat. Should anybody, any of the residents, find themselves in a lawful self-defense situation against the cow, the only expenses they should incur is a meat freezer and a trip to the butcher. Under Arizona Statute Title III, Chapter 11, Article 8, no fence districts, Maricopa County Clerk of the Board of Supervisors' office maintains, and I quote, "The Maricopa County Clerk of the Board of Supervisors' office has made every reasonable effort to obtain and maintain the no-fence district maps as accurately as possible. However, this material may be dated, which would have an impact on its accuracy, and human or mechanical error remain a possibility. The Clerk's office and other Maricopa County departments assume no responsibility or liability arising from the use of this data or information. The data and maps are provided without warranty of any kind, either express or implied. This information should be used for informational use and does not constitute a legal document for the description of these properties." So, to me, it looks like we have Maricopa County abdicating the responsibility or liability pertaining to the standard used to enforce anything within the no-district laws. So if the state does not maintain the standard of which is the basis for enforcing statute, of what value is a statute? If one of these livestock animals threatens an individual with bodily injury or death, what choice will an individual have but to defend their life? Is the risk of strolling the Adora Trails neighborhood worth minimum of $25,000 in possible legal fees? Property damage, bodily injury up to and including death, liability for replacement of livestock up to four times the value of a single cow, a totaled vehicle, increased insurance? Why? Because of the HOA's failure to adequately fence off property, because of the city of Gilbert's failure to legislate and produce a solution in collaboration with the Adora Trails, because of the state's, the state of Arizona's failure to maintain 100-year-old laws such as the no-fence districts, and because of a sovereign federally-protected nation's abject failure to build a wall. Root cause analysis is obviously lacking with the proposed legislative solution, as it neglects individual liability, self-defense mitigation, and responsibility writ large. The council and congregation in attendance must understand and agree and act to avert the threats posed by the Arizona Cow Club. We're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars of property maintenance and damage in the neighborhood writ large, and we have to take action before somebody gets killed. Lastly, I'm volunteering my expertise as an auditor to dig into our HOA's records and even the state's records, to determine if there is willful negligence or dereliction of duty in mitigating this crisis over the past decade. Surveillance audits, perimeter watch, fencing contracts, meetings with state representatives, I would be interested in looking into all of it. The HOA is quick to slap its residents with HOA fines due to the cow destruction, but it took 10 years of complaints to bring this issue here today. I could also audit the records of the HOA fines to ensure each resident sees a refund in full. In fact, I've already started this audit by surveying the southwestern corner of Adora Trails and witnessed two open pedestrian gates, at least seven breaks in the barbed-wire fence, a complete lack of fencing in other areas, inadequate and inconsistent signage regarding trespassing, and no clear delineation of property lines. That's all I have. Thank you for your time. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be, we have, it looks like Lori Bull has donated her time to Tom Bull. Thank you.
Thomas Bull, City of Gilbert. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so very kindly for being here this evening and hearing our issue and hopefully acting upon our, our issue. I'm not going to rehash everything that you've heard at this meeting, as well as countless other meetings, but I will, would like to give you my unique, I think, perspective of what's going on. I think I live in probably the most unique lot in Adora Trails. I have a view fence in the back of my lot, which immediately looks onto a very large park. It's a park that has a playground in it for children. The kids are there all the time. My, my grandchildren are there all the time, playing. It's a big park with a lot of beautiful green grass that the cows love to go over there and eat. And then, if you look immediately to my left, I don't have a house to my left. What I do have is another large greenbelt. And those two areas are where the cows congregate, immediately adjacent to my residence. Keeps us up at night, causes a lot of damage. You've heard that over and over again. But what really heightened my angst was a week ago Saturday. Now, I'm a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. At the corner of Constellation and Riggs, there's the church building that I happen to go to. And I was there on Saturday morning to clean the building. And while I was there, there were a group of people that were setting up for the funeral of a 15-year-old young man. And those people that were there, setting up to honor this young man's life, had to step over, walk through, and walk around piles of cow dung while they were trying to honor this young man's life. And that really got me upset. Now, I'm a retired police officer, and I'm a retired attorney. I've tried over 50 lawsuits to juries. I'll tell you why I think that's important. Earlier this evening, you all took out your checkbooks and you spent more than $500,000 for risk management issues. Over $300,000 for MRIs for city employees, and over $200,000 to hopefully prevent slip-and-fall accidents on city property, the trail system in particular. Now, I would hope that you would open your checkbook to the residents of Adora Trails and treat us the same way that you might treat your city employees. And do something. Please do something. Now, it's 8:58 on January 28th, and I'm going to make a prediction, and it's on the record. Sooner or later, a young person is going to be killed by one of these bulls. And why do I say a young person? Because it's the young person who doesn't know better. It's the young person who goes up very close to the bull. And I've seen that over and over again from my backyard. And sooner or later, just like in Yellowstone that we all read about, or we all see on the news, one of those bulls, just like those bison in Yellowstone, is going to charge one of those children, and they're going to kill that children. Or that bull that was roaming around that down at the church is going to roam down onto Riggs, and you, or me, or somebody is going to hit one of those bulls. onto Riggs, and you, or me, or somebody is going to hit one of those bulls. And some rabid plaintiff's lawyer out there is going to sue everybody that they can possibly think of, including this town, the HOA, you name it. They're going to sue everybody. And whether they have governmental immunity, whether you, the town has governmental immunity or not, I don't know. I'm not an expert on Arizona governmental immunity law, but you are going to get sued. So take some of those risk management dollars that you so freely spent earlier tonight, and please, please help us. That lawsuit is coming, I guarantee it. And council will understand, this issue's out in the open. In the words of the law, it's notorious, it's open, it's obvious, it's here, and it's, there's no more time for committees, there's no more time for studies, there's no more time for meetings, there's no more time to pass the buck or to kick the can down the road. We ask you to please do something now. I don't know what you can do. I think that you can do something, because otherwise, we're all wasting our time for being here this evening. Now, I was at the meeting last week, or two weeks ago at the community center, and the HOA attorneys said that you can do something. Please adopt the statutes that have been adopted in other cities, and let's do something instead of talking about it. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, oops. Okay, it looks like Dara Christensen has donated your time.
Oh, it's Dana, okay.
And Ruth Davis, are you here?
Yeah, I'm Ruth, I'm from Gilbert, Arizona.
Okay, thank you, Ruth.
My name is Dana Christensen, and I'm from Gilbert, Arizona. I've been here almost four years, and we have lived in Adora Trails our whole, our whole time that we've been here. On January 10th, we looked out the window at the cows that were loudly out in our greenbelt, and there were 11 cattle there. My kids, it was 8:00, they leave at 8:10, 8:15 to school, and so do hundreds of other children. I called the police department to report the concern, and they said, "Is any cattle chasing your children? Is anyone being chased by them?" And I said, "No." Well, then, we can't do anything about this. That's a concern. That's a great safety concern. So these cattle, as we've heard, large and small, go around, and my eight-year-old daughter and my 11-year-old daughter are walking to school, and they're heading just about a quarter mile down the road to the school. It's not far. I can see it out my window of my bedroom, and there's cattle surrounding the fields and in the walkways and in the streets. I'm very concerned not only about our long-term plan, but a short-term solution for safety. Now, just a couple days later, my kids went out, opened the garage to leave to school, and guess what? We had a ton of cattle sitting in our driveway, so they're running back inside for their safety. I know that we talk about a fence. There are 6,000 cattle, or more at this point, but we have been informed, over 6,000 cattle that are around us. Putting a fence to protect our community doesn't stop 6,000 cattle from being around, from going to Riggs, from coming on Constellation. I also attend the church right there, and they, the kids on Wednesday nights are coming out of the building, and there are herds of cattle right there. This is a major safety concern, and I, as we've said before, it is only a matter of time till something happens. We can't even gate the community with the school there. It's not going to work. And in addition to a discussion that you guys brought up earlier, you talked about a road that needed, if it had a gated community, then it would create a backup on the road. Riggs Road is incredibly busy. There's no way that even if we put a gate there, it wouldn't cause major traffic issues that could potentially cause more issues. I don't have solutions. But I know that you guys are here as Gilbert Town Council members to serve their community, and we need you. We need your help, and we appreciate your willingness to serve. Gilbert is a beautiful community, and we chose it out of all the other towns because we wanted to live in Gilbert, Arizona. And I know you chose to be on this board to represent us, and we need your help. This isn't a Door Trails problem. This is a community problem, and we all need to work together to find solutions, not just long-term, but right now, for the safety of our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next speakers, speaker has also donated their time, and it's Philip, looks like Ivy, I believe.
Ivy.
Ivy, okay.
Actually, William Durangus donated this time to me.
Okay, and you're William, right?
No, William had to go to our HOA meeting regarding the cattle right now at Santanila. However, his paper's payable to mine, so my name is also getting added.
Okay, so, so the, which, which one of you left?
William left.
Okay.
Bill, me, Dana.
And then you would have your three minutes, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for having us here. My name is Philip Ivy. I am a resident of Queen Creek to the immediate east of Adora Trails. I recently moved from the immediate west of Adora Trails, but we did have a no fence zone, so we did not have this problem. But in Santanila, my community, we are not in a no fence zone, as neither is Adora Trails. And I've had several incidents with the cows, well, I could say 20 or 30, but two of them come to mind. One, when I walked into the garage and there was a steer in the garage. I caught him off guard, and it was easy to shoo him out with no, I really didn't feel in danger. Another time recently, I was walking through Adora Trails in the evening with my wife, and I didn't see it or hear it, but she said, "Look out." And from the shadows of a wall, a steer was charging us. And I couldn't leave my wife, and as one of the speakers said earlier, there was an adrenaline rush. So, out in the open, nowhere to go, I just charged the steer and started throwing rocks at him, so he halted. The thousands of dollars they've damaged on my landscaping would have been dwarfed by the hospital or the funeral bill had that steer not stopped. So when people express frustration and fear and anger, it's valid. Now, I've had communications indirectly with the cattle owner and try to be diplomatically correct. It was communicated that they don't care. We are not of that nation, they don't care. So I don't feel that's going to be very helpful trying to interact with them, if that is indeed their position. We've tried to insulate our neighborhood. We added riprock, the cattle will walk right across it. We can't fence our neighborhood because the size of our community doesn't allow for that, and they would still come in on the roads. And when they get in the roads, they're going to look for the greenbelts anyway, so that wouldn't stop them. Gating is not financially viable for us. Barbed wire along Hunt Highway is not going to stop them. I've spent more hours than I can count repairing the barbed wire, and the next week I come back and it's cut again. So that's not going to work. A hurricane fence would work. It takes too long to cut that for the vandals to stand there, cut it so they can enter it. It's about a .9 to 1-mile stretch where you'd get hurricane fence, and that's not that expensive, especially compared to the cost of gating a community. I was told that it's approaching a million dollars to gate Adora Trails, though as we've heard, it's not a viable alternative. I don't understand, earlier at the study session, when they brought up creating a no fence zone, why it wasn't possible. The statute seems clear in the Maricopa County statutes, but we were told by Town of Gilbert's Legal that it would not work. The Santanila residents who were accompanying me earlier, none of us understood that position on why it wouldn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So our next speakers, it looks like Cody Phillips. And Cody, it looks like Charlotte Jones has donated her time. Is she still here?
No, she had to leave.
Okay, well, then you will have three minutes.
I'll do my best.
Okay, thank you.
All right, my name is Cody Phillips, and I'm a resident of the Town of Gilbert that lives in Adora Trails. Before moving to Adora Trails, though, I lived a mile and a half down the road in Sun Groves for multiple years and never once had a cattle issue. And that's the City of Chandler, obviously, so there's different rules, different ordinances. And I know somebody else has mentioned this, and I want to continue to mention this, that's part of what we're asking you transparently to do, is look at those other laws, try to institute some of them. Might they all work? Maybe they won't, maybe they will, but at least you're taking action to try to do something. Because right now, for the residents, it doesn't look like you are doing action. It looks like you're just offending things. As I was sitting here, one of our members of the community who could not be here sent me a live video of 20-plus cattle on the west side of Adora Trails approaching his house. This is an area that's not going to be solved by the fence that was specifically talked about, okay? The fence that is on the south side will not address this issue. So it's going to be a continuing issue. Despite HOA's best efforts, and I appreciate that they are actually taking real action to try to solve this, we need more help from other individuals. Now, I appreciate also that the Town Council is aware of the situation. Obviously, in the last meeting, there was quite a bit shared, and one of the things that was shared specifically was, the town remains committed to community education and enforcing state laws. And I'm going to stop there on what was specifically stated, because what I would ask each of you is, will the town, and will each of you, commit to changing state laws? Because the laws that are in place clearly are not working. In that exact same meeting, it was mentioned that the Gila River Police specifically have talked with the rancher, and the rancher is doing exactly what the law prescribed. That is an ineffective law. Part of your responsibility and part of what we need your assistance and help with is getting these laws changed. It's not just enough to say it's a state law, there's open-range problems. It's not just enough to say it's complicated. We know it's complicated. We can appreciate that it's complicated. But the lack of a simple solution doesn't mean that we take no action. The last thing that I want to talk about, and this is, to me, a very important piece, you may be doing a lot. We don't know. There is no transparency. There isn't even communication here. Like, I can't even ask you a question and say, "What are you doing to try to address this?" All I can hear is a report of what is being done, offered by the legal folks, or by, excuse me, by the police. I would like to know what we can do. How can we work with you to solve this problem, as opposed to just saying it's an issue and everyone observing the problem? Everybody knows it's a problem. Let's work together to actually fix it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our last speaker, it appears Holly Weick, I believe.
Wykel.
Wykel, okay. Has, now, you've donated your time to Hillary Howard. Is she?
Hillary has donated her time to me.
Okay.
Hillary Howard, President of Gilbert.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So I'm Holly Wykel from Adora Trails in Gilbert, and we've lived here for seven years, and I love Gilbert. It's a beautiful place. I especially chose Adora Trails because I like walking, and we have tons of walking trails, as you already know, and I like cows. I like them. I like them fenced fields where I can watch them and, and they can watch me, but they're not in my front yard eating all my plants. We moved here from Oregon, and we love to garden. We have probably more trees in our yard than almost all of our neighbors. So we love plants, and, and definitely, it's extremely expensive to replace them. I've come out of my home to find six to eight cows eating my expensive plants. We've almost hit cows on the road on several occasions. Our daughter has walked out our front door to find them on our front porch and just terrified her, and so she was able to get them away, but they're huge, they're scary. I enjoy walking while my husband trains for a marathon, so he runs, and I will walk while he'll go running, but it's dark, and they're black, like, they're black and they're dark brown, and you can't see them because we have these posts in the neighborhood, and they have like a bright light at the top of the post that's almost eye level. So when you're walking the trails, you can't see the cows till they're in your face. And I was walking one day by myself, and there was this huge cow out of nowhere, and I was terrified. And, and then I found that there was more than one. There was at least 20 in the area where I was walking by myself in the dark morning, and it was scary. And they started following me, the whole herd. Like, it was scary. So I don't like to go walking alone anymore. So I make him go walking with me after he's done running because it's not safe. Also, my neighbor across the street is disabled, and he has palm trees, and it took a lot of money for him to pay for someone to come in and install these palm trees, and they've literally eaten half of them. Thousands of dollars of damage, and, and he can't even go out and replace them. We, our kids on the playgrounds are so used to seeing, you know, cow dung everywhere, that we've even seen them decorate piles of crap with googly eyes and sticks. So, that can't be healthy for the kids. So we just, we appreciate your time and hearing our concerns, and we just want safety and peace and to be able to walk our trails at night or in the morning and not feel like we're going to get stabbed by a bull. So we've also heard them crying in the middle of the night. You'll hear outside your windows baby cows crying for their mothers, and then you'll hear the moms, and it, it's terrifying. They're really loud, and they're right outside your house. So we appreciate any protection and safety that you can give us, and, and also helping us to retain our property values. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Well, that concludes, I believe, the citizens' communication. So with that, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Patrick, I think I saw Jessica here earlier. Could we ask that she contact those who were talking about red lights, traffic, and street improvements? That she could make contact with them? And maybe Robert could make contact with the idea about community garden. Thank you. Future meetings. Councilmember Banjivani.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like for us to consider a study session with comparative traffic accident data over the last couple of years, especially as it relates to red light runners and accidents.
You get that, Patrick? Thank you. Communications, report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A couple announcements tonight, a welcome home for one of our employees, and then some fond farewells for some employees that we've got that are retiring first. Welcome back Ken Snow. Ken Snow, our wastewater division manager. He'd been on military leave for the last 14 months, serving as a battalion executive officer in the Army National Guard. We thank him for his service, and we also thank Patty Jordan, who has filled in as our interim wastewater manager for these last 14 months, leading our wastewater division and maintaining the quality services our residents and businesses rely on. Oh, and Ken is in the audience with us tonight. Ken, if you'd raise your hand, I'm sure it's a familiar face to many of you. Thank you, Ken. Next, we've got a retirement, Roy Jones. He's been with us 23 years. His hard work and commitment to our facility maintenance team and maintaining the public safety building genuinely made a lasting impact. His efforts have ensured a safe and secure environment for our community, and his devotion to excellence has truly been inspiring. As he moves on to the next chapter of his life, we wish Roy all the best of luck, and Roy is really one of those employees that knew just how to do just about everything, and we turned to for a lot of things and issues we had. Thank you, Roy, for your service to our organization and to our community. Next, we've got a retirement on our people team, Donna Pedrera. She's a senior benefits analyst. She's retiring after 10 years of service to Gilbert. As a member of the people team, Donna was a key contributor to many benefit programs over the years. Most importantly, she assisted employees with requests for FMLA, military leave, life insurance claims, retirement from public safety, and various other life issues. She cared- She cared for and compassionately assisted some of our employees through their hardest life moments. Her work helped Gilbert earn awards for employee wellness, recognition by the Department of Defense for supporting military service members, and the receipt of the extraordinary employer support award by ESGR. Thank Donna for the impact she's had on our organization, and wish her well in her retirement. And we also have the retirement of a face that is familiar to all of us, Pete Rangel. Lieutenant Pete Rangel will retire at the end of this week, following his distinguished thirty-two-year career with the Gilbert Police Department. He started as a Gilbert police officer in nineteen ninety-three, and has served as an acting commander for the last four months. His enduring passion for working patrol and SWAT has been a constant motivation throughout his service. Lieutenant Rangel is deeply grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Gilbert for the past thirty-two years, and we certainly thank Pete for all of his service to this community, and we wish him the best of luck. With that, Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Report from the council. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanna thank you for allowing me to continue to be the Parks and Rec liaison. I really enjoy that. Matter of fact, over the break, I bought a new bike, and I rode fifteen miles on the canal pathways on a Friday, I'm sorry, on a Saturday morning at eight AM, and saw hundreds of people, not only riding their bikes, walking on the trail, but also playing baseball with their kids, and just being in the parks. And it saddens me sometimes when I look at social media, which I probably really shouldn't do, but when I look at social media and see that some people make it a part-time job to tell everyone how much we're overspending on our parks, and I really wanna say to those people and everyone else to go out, use our parks, enjoy them, use our programs, spend some time with your family out on them, and see those other hundreds of people that are out there on a Saturday morning at eight AM. So I challenge them to actually do that. And then I wanna read for what's going on in Parks and Rec, and I want you all to know that I don't write this, okay? I just read it, okay? So Father-Daughter Dance. On Friday, January thirty-first, from six to eight PM, at the Gilbert Community Center, the Father-Daughter Dance will be taking place. It's open to all you ladies aged two to nineteen, and their dad, favorite uncle, grandpa, or family friend. Dance to your favorite music, enjoy dinner and drinks, and make crafts. This will be a night to remember. And then we also have our Galentine's Bingo. Hi, ladies. Join us for a special Galentine's Bingo, full of sweet treats, prizes, great company, and plenty of laughs. Grab your best gal pal, I'm sorry, grab your best gal pals, thanks, Rocky, and leave the boys behind. The girls, the night is for girls only, taking place Friday, February seventh, from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM at McQueen Park Activity Center. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Just wanted to announce a save the date for the next Gilbert Symphony Orchestra concert. This is free to the public on February twentieth at seven PM at the Higley Center for Performing Arts. And the theme at this next concert is "From Dvorak to Queen: A Bohemian Spring." This will also be a dementia-friendly event, and, as I mentioned, is free to the public. And that is because of generous support from the Gilbert Parks and Rec Foundation and sponsors. Also, as someone of Chinese heritage, I'd like to recognize the Lunar New Year tomorrow. It's the year of the wood snake, and around the world, this is a time of family reunions, traditions, and celebrations to welcome the new year of prosperity and good fortune. I encourage everyone to take the opportunity to learn about the significance of the Lunar New Year. Gilbert's connection to Chinese culture exists with our Sister Cities partnership with LaShan China. Gilbert Sister Cities is hosting an East-West Fest dinner next Thursday, where you can meet our student ambassador candidates and see a performance by the Phoenix Wu Shu Academy, which is a Chinese martial arts school located in Gilbert. Their athletes represent the U.S. in international competitions around the world, and I wish you all a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Report from the mayor, just a couple of items. First, I wanted to recognize, before we talk about the Gilbert Volunteer Fair, let me, any of you that have been a long-term resident in Gilbert knew Dr. Wally DeLecky, who was one of our superintendents of public education in the Gilbert schools. If you did not know him, he was a pillar of our community. I've known Wally for thirty-five, thirty-six years, I guess, and he passed away a couple of weeks ago, and we want to recognize him and all the work he's did in this community. He truly was, like I said, a pillar of the community. He and I spent a lot of time, as the town was exploding in growth, we sat down together to talk about ways to address that growth, both the students and also everything else that came along with everybody who's moving into the community. But Wally was, he was a great man, and he'll be truly missed, and I believe that there's a memorial for him, it's either February twelfth or thirteenth. But please remember him in your prayers, his family at his passing. He was truly remarkable. Then I'd like to also mention the Gilbert Volunteer Fair, which is Saturday, February first, at the Southeast Regional Library. You can serve, there are many opportunities. We have twenty nonprofit organizations that are part of this volunteer fair, that's ten to twelve, on Saturday, February first. Next is the Gilbert Volunteer MVP Awards. We look to nominate volunteers who are leading examples of Gilbert's values, like driven, kind, bold, and humble. We're accepting nominations for Youth Volunteer of the Year and Gilbert Kindness Group Awards. Nominations are open from February third through the twenty-fourth, so if you know somebody you can volunteer, or you can nominate as a Volunteer of the Year, please do that. And last, I think there's one more about Gilbert Feeding Families. The Food Drive for Gilbert Feeding Families, February tenth through the twenty-third. This is a big thing in the community, and I'd encourage you to get involved with this. You can see all the sponsors that get involved. Please check it out and make this a successful food drive that we've always done every year. So thank you very much. And with that, I believe I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.